Regular meeting, Page County School Board.
Yes.
Yes.
Miss Bryant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Have a motion to allow Ms. Alder to be on the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant and a second by Mr. Painter to allow Ms. Alder to be on the phone. Mr. Painter?
Yes.
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 Yes. Please pause for a minute of silence as we prepare for the meeting tonight.
She is a hard worker and is dedicated to academic success. She displays her support from her peers by serving as a peer mentor to several students at her school. In her spare time, Trista enjoys attending karate classes in Kowloon. She can often be seen working on her latest project in her spare time at school. Page County Middle School is excited to see what the future holds for Trista. Trista, thank you for being a responsible student and serving as a role model. Congratulations on being selected as the pledge leader for Page County Middle School. We are very proud of you.
All right.
Will you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good will of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trista. You all are more than welcome to stay, but it is a beautiful evening, so you are also more than welcome to leave.
Thank you.
Dr. Fox, do you have any agenda changes or additions?
I do not.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overfelt and a second by Ms. Alder to approve the agenda as presented.
Ms. Alder?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
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 I would like to certify that personnel matters discussed in closed session were from Section 2.2-3711A1.
With a motion by Ms. Sullivan Smoot.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Overfelt to certify personnel matters discussed in closed session.
Yes.
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 Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Sullivan Smoot and a second by Mr. Overfelt to approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
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 Yes. Now, Ms. Lisa Pullen is our volunteer of the month from Page County Middle School. You are also going to have a month.
Page County Middle School is excited to recognize Ms. Lisa Pullen as the volunteer of the month for Page County Middle School. Ms. Pullen has served as a mentor at Page County Middle School for the past two years. She is supportive of our students and encourages them to be all that they can be. Additionally, Ms. Pullen supports all of our students by donating school supplies and items to our character. She has also partnered with her church to raise funds for our backpack blessing program to ensure students in need have food to take home every weekend. In support of our teachers, Ms. Pullen provided valuable classroom supplies and brought in baked goods for staff appreciation week. She is such a blessing to Page County Middle School, and it is an honor to extend our sincerest appreciation and gratitude for her support. Ms. Pullen, thank you for your tireless work in support of students and staff. On behalf of the Page County Public Schools and Page County Middle School, congratulations on being volunteer of the month.
You want to say too?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Miller and Ms. Hitt.
Good evening. We are excited to be here with you this evening to share some instructional highlights and also some other exciting things that have been going on at Page County Middle School this year. It has been about a year since we've been before you, and I'm going to start off with this first slide to show you that we couldn't say this last year, but we are now fully accredited.
Yeah, that's very good.
We're very excited to share that. You can take a look here at our academic achievement, English, math, and science. We're at a level one. Also, for our chronic absenteeism, we are at a level one. But we do continue to work on our achievement gaps. We have some improvements to make there, particularly with our students with disability. And a few things that we're doing to improve that area. We're working with teachers to increase effective collaboration between our general education teachers and our special education teachers. And we're working with teachers to use their student assessment data to make informed instructional decisions. And then also just working with teachers to analyze instructional practices to improve outcomes. So we're continuing to grow in that area. On our next slide, I want to show you the reading scores. Keep in mind, as you look at these scores, these do not include growth and recovery. So if you take a look at the 23-24 school year, our reading scores were at a 64%, but I have made note here that with growth and recoveries, we were at 75%. Taking a look at math, you can also see there that we are at 62% for the 23-24 school years. And with growth and recoveries, we were at a 75% there for math. Science, I really want you to take a look here, going back to the 21-22 school year. So if you look all the way over to the left, we were at a 42% pass rate for the 21-22 school year. For 22-23, we increased that to 50%. And then last year, for 23-24 school year, we jumped up to 68%. So we have really been improving in that area, working hard in that area. So far this year, we've tested half of our eighth grade class in the fall, and our pass rate was a 69%. So we'll see how that turns out when we test the other half in the spring and get those average scores. And then for history, we are pretty consistent year by year with our history scores. 23-24, we're at a 69%. We have already tested half of the eighth grade class, and our scores in the fall were averaging 73%. So we seem to be really improving in that area as well. Next slide is going to be chronic absenteeism, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hitt to talk about this and also some other exciting things that we'd like to share with you tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So for chronic absenteeism, 22% of our students were chronically absent during the 23-24 school year. That was down from 30% the year before, and our goal for this year is to decrease that by 10%. And we're proud to say at the right now that we're at 10% for the school year. So we know we've got a little bit left, so we have a big push for that. So some action steps that we've implemented this year include monthly individual student rewards for two or few absences. We've seen them be really excited about the things we're offering in our store for that, and they're asking, when are we going to have it? When's the day? So they're looking forward to that, so that's been effective. We have perfect attendance drawings as well, attendance recognition wall for 95% or better. So that's right outside of our office, and you can see them like going through the list, looking for their names, so that's really neat. Monthly homeroom competition for best attendance and then the attendance meetings that are being held with parents and students to identify the barriers and problems to be able to solve for better attendance. And that has been really effective, and Ms. Muller's done a great job of leading that along with her conference as well. Those have been great conversations and have led to some really good things. Sports highlights, I was a college athlete, so I love this part of my job. Our girls team this year was undefeated. They absolutely rocked it. That's very, very exciting to see. We had an increased participation in cross-country, and I've looked over the past few years, and each year it keeps upping, upping, upping. And we even have other things in place to send a letter out to the fifth graders to get them excited about it. And we would hold interest meetings and things of that nature for each of our sports. Our cheer team halftime performance was absolutely incredible. It was. It was just amazing, very, very impressive for them to be able to perform those skills and just everything was safe, and they were excited. And I mean, the whole crowd was just pumped. And then we had a successful first year of volleyball as a sport. It was a club last year, changed the sport this year, and that worked very well. All right, so our PCTC visit, our seventh grade students visited the tech center. There's a lot of interactive hands-on activities. They were engaged, they asked great questions, they came back, and even to this day, they're talking about it. They're talking about plans to get there and what they need to do. So it's great to kind of put that in their heads of what we have to offer, what's available, and what do you have to do to get there. So that was really exciting. In the fall, we held our career fair, so our eighth grade students participated in that. And you can see the list of businesses, organizations that were involved, the Harrisonburg Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, Adagio House, Barryon IT, Nicole Brumfield, she was great. The National Park, PCTC Cosmetology, you can see that picture at the bottom. That was super cool to see them, you know, showing off the work that they do. And they had, I know they had nails there, but they also had the mannequin for the hair and everything, so they were all hands-on with that. The Centerra Nurses, that was a huge thing I saw walking down the hallway that day with the gloves and the gowns and all that fun stuff, so they enjoyed that. Mass Nan Resort and also the Navy. And our SCCLA highlights, the state conference was held in Virginia Beach over spring break. We had 12 students that attended and placed in their competitions, and eight are moving on to advanced to nationals. So we had four third place, seven second place, and then Lizzie Wood got first place and also the chapter leadership award. So that was amazing, a huge accomplishment, and to spend their time over spring break doing something like that is just truly incredible, and we're super, super proud of that. So thank you guys so much for your time. We're open for questions.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I have a question. So we moved the alt head down to Page County Middle School. How's that going?
Well, it's going well, but we definitely have some work to do. There's been some hiccups with it, but that's just trying to figure out what's the best way to run that program, the best way to help quite a variety of students feel successful. You know, we've got students coming from LaRae Middle. We don't know them very well. We've got our own students that are in that program, different age groups, six, seven, and eight, some are coming and going. So just trying to figure that out, but we're much improving. They're being academically successful much more now than they were in the beginning of the year. So we're certainly moving right along with it, and we're so glad to have it. We are really glad to have that program, and we're just going to continue to improve.
The plan is to keep this.
Yeah, I think for now, I think our five-year long-term goal is eventually to get all of your alt head under one building so that you have all those programs together. That'll take a little bit of, you know, infrastructure, some space, and then adding teachers, so you have content teachers for English, for math, for science, for social studies. So that's a long-term plan over time.
Is that something we want to maybe address in our strategic plan?
Yeah, it's in there. There's a piece about growing and reframing. I think our first step was to do this piece, which was to separate out the high school, the middle school, and the elementary, work to see how those are. And like she said, there are bumps always, and then you fix that bump, you move to the next bump. So I think over time, you'll see it continue. Because it, I think, I'll ask you to speak to it, but I think for teachers, especially for those kids that are creating the disruptions many times, this is a particular outlet that we have in our division. Other divisions might not have it at all, or they may not have, or they have to participate in a regional program where they get a certain number of seats. We control the seats, we control the length of time, we've redone it, we have the handbook, we have protocols, we have levels, we have steps. So I just see it growing and continuing to grow and it be an outlet for teachers sometimes when they get frustrated.
Right, and I will say one of the most positive things I've seen, and I will say that this is Mrs. Hitt being creative with this plan, that students have the opportunity to earn points, and they level. And once they get to a certain level, we give them privileges. And because it's in our school, we can, when students get to a point of reaching the goal, they might go into a classroom for a period, so they can get back in front of the teacher. But it's not like full-on, I'm going to turn you loose. It's gradual to see how the student's going to do. And that's something that they would be able to do at the tech center. So that has been very positive. And sometimes that going into a classroom, going into PE might be with an instructional aid support, or maybe they just go by themselves. So it just depends on where the student at. Every student is different, needs are different, wants are different. You know, some of them want to do that, some don't want to do that. But that has been the most positive thing about having our program in our school, just being able to offer those steps.
Because I think we talked about being outside hallway, about having something physically to do outside sometimes, I think that was mentioned.
Oh, that.
Or I misremembered that.
That the students get to do that. They do.
They do, okay.
They do, yes. It's there when they're in schedule and there's a recess break, you know, and that every day, if the weather's good, they can do that. I really love the individual things of it, though, just emphasizing that with the needs, every student who's been through the program, it's looked different. Or when they're going out to even just the library with a classroom or lunch, because we've got to look at the social situation as well, of course, of how they're responding to that. And they go in the classrooms, we're saying, hey, we're still seeing this behavior, let's work on that here. And then just really the ultimate step is getting them back into the other classrooms and doing well, and that has happened.
Dr. Huber, policy updates?
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the board, members of the community and audience. This evening, this is again an information item to put in front of the board for our policy updates. As you're aware, we do subscribe to the SBA as our policy service. And so these are just a reflection of those policies that came through. This actually was a February item from the SBA. It's a total of 27 policies in total, and this is a summary sheet that just goes through each one, each topic, and provides just, you know, an update on why they're being looked at and any substantive changes or cross-references or, you know, legal updates that are part of this. So I'm open for questions, but again, this is an information item for this evening. If there's anything that stood out to anybody on that review.
Thank you. Dr. Fox, superintendent update?
Yes, thank you. Can I grab the flipper? Thank you. Yes, good evening, everyone. Just a couple different things, some celebrations tonight. We're getting towards that part of the year where we start to reflect on the year, and there's a lot of great celebrations coming up. So a little bit of a mixed bag for you this evening. The first one is just starting again with a budget update. Where are we now? We're still awaiting information from the governor's office for the state in terms of the budget there. So nothing new with regard to that. Board of Supervisors on Monday night, they did verbally commit to contribute funds needed for the 3% compensation increase, which is the two in the step. So that's good news. We'll build that into the budget, and when we bring it to you in May for adoption, we'll be able to move forward with contracts with that being reflected. So that is good news. We're grateful and thankful for that. They are holding on all other funding appropriations until we hear more from the state. So, you know, my hope is that we hear soon from the state, because all of us have a May 15 deadline. In order to have an adopted budget, we all know we'll make changes or amendments to that budget after that date. But hopefully, we won't have to make too many that we can know where we're going by May 2nd, when the governor has to really push out what he wants to do. So just unfortunately, it is still in a little bit of a waiting game there with that. They did approve funding for the demographic and the educational studies. You all approved that resolution at the last meeting. So we're working through a timeline and a process for that. The RFP has closed, those have come in, those are being reviewed, and we'll bring that information to you either. Dr. Johnson, it'll be June, right? Do we bring that, May or June?
Well, we met today, and it depends on the spots from the seventeen, I think, it was seven respondents, so following up with a couple, and we'll either be May 15th or early June, then we've.
So once that process is complete, we'll then move to the demographic and the educational studies. So, but the funding for that has been approved, so that's good news. They are also holding on any FY26 CIP funding. I do plan to push back on that a little bit because I do think it's important for things like buses. We need to get those, and because of the lag time, somewhere between six to eight to 12 months, we can't wait another six or eight months, we won't have any buses. So we are going to push on a few things. We'll talk about that on Friday in the May work session, but we're going to push back a little bit on that to try and get some funding for some of those things. They want to wait until the educational and the demographic studies come back. And again, that's why we pared that list down, was we took some of those things off that were probably better suited to waiting. But the things that we left on there were things that we really kind of needed immediate attention to.
Dr. Fox, I just want to make a comment. I looked at, I saw the note that you sent back, the matrix about the buses. And having been a bus driver in my 12th year at my high school, you know, you've got to have good buses for these kids. And we've got some buses out there that they have some amazingly high mileage on. And I'm amazed, I mean, I applaud our maintenance crew for keeping them on the road. I mean, we have buses with over 200,000 miles on them, and we've got buses out there that were still on the road from 1997 and earlier. Those are old buses. So I'm hoping that they, I hope the board understands how critical it is that we have safe transportation for our kids. What are they hoping the demographic studies want to change the background of?
I don't know, because we already adjusted that CIP to reflect waiting and put those things on hold. So the other things were, you know, for example, a safety issue at the high school. Well, we know that those are our youngest buildings. It's likely that those buildings will remain in function, so let's go ahead and get that work done, because otherwise, you're pushing it off six months or a year. The cost is just going to continue to go up, and the needs are there. So we're going to push a little bit more on some of those things to try and get back to them to say, can we at least get these things through? And let's get some things moving, because we can't wait another, you know, by the time you finish the RFP, you put out for the demographic, the companies estimate between four and six months for that process to finish.
Right.
So, you know, say it's June that you get the RFPs out and you get information, you're looking at somewhere in the mid to late fall, early winter, before you get anything back. That's in the school world, that's another year. You know, because once you hit January, you're moving planning for the next school year. So, and again, a bus, you order a bus in December, it's not going to come in in that fiscal year, so that money can't be spent. So we need to get those buses. They need to be like real ready with the POs on July 1 to roll with those bus POs.
And I think, if I may too, we think Dr. Johnson's in his office, they've done a really good job of looking at all the bus routes, trying to consolidate where possible, cut down the necessary routing, trying to look at the mileage use and so forth. And so I feel like we've gone outside the county looking for deals on buses from other school systems. I feel like we've done our due diligence to make this happen, and so I think we just need to, it's a positive response.
Yeah, and we've looked at grant opportunities. We amended the all-in grant at the beginning of the year. That was quite the challenge. Dr. Huber took that one on. We amended that to include, I mean, we ended up getting a bus. There was one on the lot that we could get, and we ended up getting that one. So a unique situation where we found the funding for it, it was available, and we could turn that around. But that doesn't always happen where they're available in that short of a time period.
Yeah, and I don't think you can find them on Facebook Marketplace.
You can, but I don't think you want them.
It might be a scam.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted to mention with respect to the board of supervisors, we found out recently, we had applied as a division with the board of supervisors for the division safety officer position. If you recall, in our budget, we had it for about $33,000, would be the local in-kind contribution to that position. That position was a $100,000 grant opportunity from the state, and it would provide us with a division safety officer, someone who could focus on the safety and security of our buildings, our processes, our policies, our procedures, all of that stuff. Dr. Johnson was informed, when the board of supervisors was informed, that they had been awarded the grant. So we were very excited. We were putting plans into place to bring that information forward. And then a couple days later or a week later, we, Dr. Johnson was included on an email where it just said, the county is declining the grant. So we reached out to Ms. Muller to say, why are we doing, why would we do that? And the response that we got was that the board of supervisors didn't necessarily want to do any more grants where it might have required a position beyond the life of the grant. So you have one year of financial commitment. If we come back and then ask for that position, the next year, you have to find the full local funding for that position. Totally understandable, I get that. We hadn't asked for anything beyond, we hadn't even had discussions about beyond a year for that grant. So we were disappointed with that outcome, because that was, you know, that's essentially a really great opportunity for this small division to have. You could hire somebody with a police, a safety, security background to come in and evaluate your buildings and help us make even better decisions than what we have been making with regard to school safety and security. So a little disappointed that that door shut for that.
Well, I have another comment, if I may. I think it's more than disappointing to lose this grant. I mean, it's money that Dr. Johnson worked on very hard for over a year, right?
We applied, was this the second, sorry, Mr. Overfelt, this was the second time we applied.
We applied about 14 months ago. I already did, and we applied about three months ago that we could reapply, and so we pulled it back out and updated it and showed that it's currently submitted and then got awarded it.
And the county was involved in that process the whole time, because we applied to them before.
Well, we had to submit it through the county, correct?
They're the submitter of the grant.
So one would assume that if you submitted it through the county, that it was going to be approved, and there would be no problem with safety and security of our children, right? But then now we've lost a key position, and, you know, for the grant that we submitted, that we did, and it does, I read the grant, there's nowhere in there where it says we're going to do supervision of Sheriff's Department's personnel. It really is a key person that's going to handle the security management of our entire school system. Relieving a lot of that responsibility from the current staff, which is sometimes overburdening you and your current job, right?
Also not their real specialty, I don't think, as far as being a school safety officer.
I mean, but then I understand that actually the declination of the grant happened within two. two hours of the approval. Is that, is that accurate?
Her email, we were, yeah, we found that out. Trail was such, we told you we were going to get it, and then the next email just happened to be on the trail, saying it was going to be declined, and then the county office asked about the process to decline. There was a response from DCBA saying there had to be a memo form signed by leadership of the county.
So, I, not to poke anybody in the eye, but how, how can the Board of Supervisors been involved in the decision process within a two-hour timeframe? I don't think that happened. So, it had to be some kind of historical rationale, I guess, but I firstly, I personally find this is a tremendous blow to the safety and security of our most valuable asset in this county, and that's our kids. So, it's just, I'm, I'm, I'm actually really upset about it.
And I too am disappointed, and I talked to several of the Board of Supervisor members. And I know within that two-hour, three-hour timeframe, there was no conversation. And this is what I said to the ones that I spoke with. Knowing what this grant would have provided for this school system, especially safety, and especially like the world is as now. I mean, several weeks ago, 13-year-old walked into school with a gun in his backpack, and it went off. Thank goodness it didn't hurt anybody. But, and what I said to them was, common courtesy for such a grant, to at least give us an opportunity to hear what their concerns were, and then for us to, you know, have a idea of what they didn't want to have, and if they didn't want it to come back to next year, we would have probably agreed to that if we were to get it this year. But there was no conversation, and that's what I really expressed to the ones that I spoke with, common courtesy. I mean, we're talking about the safety of our children in a school system, and with a world like it is today, it breaks my heart that this was denied without any type of communication whatsoever. And so, as we go forward, I would hope that a lesson to be learned is worth a meeting or a phone call or some type of communication to express the importance on both sides, and then come to that agreement. But that didn't happen.
I'm at hopes for, maybe there's an opportunity to revisit this. It may not be the case, but I believe it's something that we definitely need to look into.
Well, I talked to my representative, and they do have, they have had conversations about not approving those type of things with a grant that may end up being a full-time position. But you're right, I think, Jackie, there should have been a conversation of how we could have worked it out. It could have been a one-year. In our schools, do we often have grant positions that we make permanent and add to the budget after it's expired?
No, I mean, there were a few, remember with S. or O. Leon?
I know one, at least one, yeah.
There were some, but for the most part, no, we don't. When the grant ends, we typically, either that position becomes absorbed through something else, or it's eliminated, because we don't potentially have the funding for it, so. And we always are clear with people, if they're hired under a grant, we let them know the terms of that grant, like, this is a one-year grant, this contract is for one year. We're very, very clear about that, because we don't want to mislead anybody to thinking that they have a contract that's for five years or something.
We typically, that, with any government employee on a contract basis, that they're aware of that. I mean, you know.
But if this is going to be like, kind of a rule of thumb, I guess, for how long do they want to do that? And since we have to apply through the county, you know, that's the division's employees tying up their time. Is there any way that somebody would at least notify, hey, it's just not worth your time to apply for this, because their time is valuable?
Would they reach back out to us to reapply? Did we get notified, or did they get notified?
So, they were notified that there was the opportunity to reapply. So, then I got an email from the county, from the person, the person at the county, stating that it's reopened, that campus schools can reapply. We were excited, so we didn't. So, we funneled it through the county side on it after they suggested that.
So, they were aware.
So, if they were aware, so if that was an issue, then, I mean, it boils down to communication.
Agreed.
And they could have either upfront, when, when that happened, communicated it, or even after they had these discussions, if it was, if they had discussed this, knowing that that grant was in, they could have had that conversation.
We were notified by email, we, and that was on the trail, modified email. And then there was a certification phase, in which, again, the county side had to certify, which they did, and then it was a few weeks later, when Dr. Paul M. was in the county side, and at that point, those emails that we're in, virtually.
It's a loss. It's a loss. Sorry for that.
No, that's okay. It's good, good conversation. So, thank you. We appreciate the support with that. In different news, it is that time of year where we celebrate and announce our Teachers of the Year, our Support Staff of the Year, and our Transportation Employees of the Year. So, here's your list freshly off. I think the last folks were notified yesterday that they had been nominated and selected as the Teachers of the Year. So, we will be celebrating them on May the 12th at our Employee Recognition Event. So, we congratulate them, we thank them, and this is a peer process, so they've been nominated and selected by their peers. So, those are our Teachers of the Year from each of our schools. And you'll notice, you may not remember, you might, but David Williams is a two-timer. He was the Teacher of the Year at the Tech Center last year as well, the electricity teacher. So, I don't know that I've ever had a one, two years in a row, so kudos to Mr. Williams. And then our Support Staff Members of the Year, obviously, we can't run schools without these folks, they're critical to the work. So, you're seeing a variety of folks from instructional aides to our nurse to secretaries across the board. So, congratulations to them, and they as well will be joining us on May the 12th. And then our employee, all right, it seems to be. Transportation Employees of the Year. So, if you recall, we started this last year, and so we sort of, because some of the folks in the southern region may not ever see a driver who's predominantly in the Luray and vice versa. So, we have four winners from the Luray area, essentially one from each of our four schools in the Luray area, four from the southern area, and then there's one who either does out-of-division routes, or is someone who might do something across the division. So, those are our nine Transportation Employees of the Year. Right now, that voting for, we will select two-division level, just like we select the Division Teacher of the Year, we select the Division Support Staff Member of the Year, and we'll select a northern and a southern Transportation Employee of the Year. That voting is open until Fri, uh, Sunday, and then Dr. Huber and his committee is meeting tomorrow to review the applications for our Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Member of the Year. And then those will all be announced at the May 12 event. So, good luck to everybody, and again, thank you for all of the work that goes into being accepted and nominated for something like this. And then just a couple of, of some really great activities that took place last week. So, we thought we'd just follow up with a few pictures for you. Our art teachers from all of our schools collaborated to provide our families and the community with a spectacular display of student artwork on Thursday, April 17th. Some samples for you. I just want to give a shout out and a thank you to our art teachers, because they do so much to make this happen. It's a lot of work, and just the creativity that they allow kids to express needs to be commended. So, Wendy Reid from Luray Elementary, Ramona Davidson from Shenandoah, Nora Freeman from Springfield, Kim Painter from Stanley, Katrina Marcy from Luray Middle, Jacqueline Farmer from Page County Middle, Randy Jenkins from Luray High, and Heather Fellers from Page County High School. This was another really well-attended event, and one that showcased, again, the amazing talent and creativity of our students. And we also wanted to give a shout out and another thank you to our art teachers, because they keep up the bulletin boards and the fresh play that you see when you come in. So, they're on a schedule, and they come in and they replace that artwork for us, so we're grateful for them, because we love it, and I know it's, it's a nice piece when people come into our front for wear and lobby. So, thank you to our art teachers for all of their hard work, and great job to all of the students for their, their work. We also, last week, had our Gifted and Talented Showcase, was held on April 14th. Thank you to Mrs. Erin Knoll, the Elementary Gifted Specialist for coordinating the event, and to Mrs. Bethany Linton, Litten, and Mrs. Shirley Weekly, Mrs. Kristen Vaughn, and Ms. Micah Baker, who assisted to make that night happen. So, students and families were welcomed, along with a variety of staff members who were there, and they participated in a rotation of four different interactive stations. Collaborative Egg Drop STEM Challenge, Robotics Mission with Dash Robots, which you can see in the bottom there, a Research Project Presentations, where you see Ms. Madeline there, and a Critical Thinking Escape Room Challenge. So, the turnout was remarkable, and all the students demonstrated exceptional skills and creativity. It was a wonderful opportunity for families to celebrate the achievements of our gifted learners. So, again, thank you to the staff who made that happen, and great job to all of the kids for their hard work. And then lastly, we also had our English Learner Event last week. So, this year, the Division-wide Night was held on April 16th. Thank you to Mrs. Monica Janey and Mrs. Megan Williams, our EL teachers, for putting that event together for students and their families. The theme this year was Language and Cultural Pride. The EL students from all grade levels have been reading books about being bilingual, multilingual, or how that, and how that's a superpower. They've also read stories about children like them, whose families celebrate different holidays, eat different foods, come from different countries, and how it's a part of their story. The students wrote cultural stories that they shared, and they completed family projects. The event, again, was also well-attended, and we're grateful to the community groups who also came out in support of families and students. I believe Paco was there. There were a lot of different groups out there to support families as well.
I would like a repeat in the picture, because I've got to tell you, the food was amazing. So, that is not pictured, but the food was absolutely amazing. It was such a neat event. I'm really glad I went to see just the pride and the culture, and it was, it was really nice.
Thank you for being here. And then a little bit more good news. We sent this out to you all, but we were a feature story on WHSV recently about the PCTC fifth-grade extravaganza. So, a nice story on there. I want to thank Dr. Huber for making the connection, and for Mr. Pitts and Mrs. Pettit for getting the, getting together and doing it very quickly. But a great story, and there's another one coming next week that will feature our state winner for electricity, Tanner Weaver.
Oh, great.
And they're going to highlight him, because he is the top electricity student from the state. And he will go in June, I believe it is, to compete in Atlanta, representing Virginia. So, it's a huge, yeah. So, again, thank you, Dr. Huber, for setting up those. And then just looking ahead, give you a little bit of advanced notice, May 5 through 9 is Teacher Appreciation Week. What we do here in Page County is we recognize all of our staff groups, so transportation, custodians, cafeteria, everybody, secretaries, we, we roll it all into one, and the schools take the majority. They do a bunch of activities throughout the course of the week. The division sends over a thank you on Wednesdays for them, but we also want to extend our appreciation to our parent-teacher organizations, other groups, families, businesses, organizations who all come out to support all the activities that take place during that week. So, just a heads up that we'll be celebrating that on May 5 through the 9th. So, that's all I have.
So, I think I'm next with the Superintendent Search Update. So, we have, it's open, the application is open for April 30th, and then we are going to start reviewing applications on May 6th. There we are. An updated timeline, I believe, has been added to the website.
Yes, good evening, board members. We have them provided with the name certification, where Fund One operating is $312,463.53. Fund Five Food, Fund Five Food Service, $20,934.49. Total expenditures, $333,398.2. Along with that, you have the local match calculation and the check registers. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those for you.
I'll make a motion, do we accept claims?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Sullivan and a second by Mr. Overfelt to accept claims for payment? Mr. Overfelt?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
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 Yes, we have one PO for your consideration this evening. It is using the instructional funds, grant funds that Dr. Huber presented in March for the Students with Disabilities Grant. That was a $30,000 grant award for Page County Middle School, and I'm sure if we have any questions, myself and/or the team can.
I'll make a motion that we approve the POs over $10,000 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Ms. Sullivan to approve the POs over $10,000?
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Dr. Huber, Special Education Annual Plan?
Absolutely. So, good evening again, everyone. Just bringing to the Board for action this evening is our Special Education Annual Plan that was presented last meeting as information by his speaker. So, I'm looking for your approval in action.
I make a motion that we approve the plan presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Overfelt and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the Special Education Annual Plan as presented?
Yes.
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 Yes. Dr. Huber, micro grant application?
It's me again. So, bringing again for approval in action, this is not new information for the Board or the community. This is our micro grant that I talked about several months back. What, that was $5,000 each for Springfield Elementary and Luray Elementary, so we're bringing it back to you, because it does need to go through a formal Board approval. But it is the same information that we brought to you earlier on. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
So, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the micro grant application as presented.
Second. The motion by Ms. Painter and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the micro grant application as presented. The only thing, objective three. It says LES will decrease the chronic absenteeism rate at Springfield and Luray Elementary School. Under the medical objective. At Springfield and Luray Elementary School.
We can certainly make an adjustment, but the school-specific?
Yeah, these. Yeah, the grant funds are only for those.
But I think what it says is LES will decrease the chronic absenteeism rate at Springfield and Luray Elementary.
I see.
Just take up LES.
Yep, yep, makes sense. Thank you.
Yep. Actually, it's not my catch, but.
Well, you should have owned it there.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Overfelt?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
It's your painter?
Yes.
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 Seavers, do you have a resolution?
I do. I have a resolution to read into the record. Resolution to the Page County Board of Supervisors for Budget Amendments to Reallocate FY2025 Funds, whereas the Board of Supervisors approved the categorical funding of the school budget for fiscal year 2024-2025, and whereas the Page County Board will exceed the approved 2024-2025 fiscal year budget in the category of operations and maintenance, and whereas the aging school buildings have been experiencing increased maintenance needs, which have resulted in higher operational costs, and whereas the Page County Board, Page County School Board recognizes the critical importance of maintaining a safe and conducive learning environment for our students and staff, and whereas the reallocation of funds will ensure that school buildings are safe, functional, and meet compliance standards. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Page County School Board does hereby request that the Page County Board of Supervisors reallocate monies with no increase or decrease of local appropriations involved in the amount of $225,000 in transportation to operations and maintenance. That is the budget. That is the budget amendment table below. This is to certify that the foregoing resolution was authorized by the Page County School Board during its regular session on Thursday, April 24, 2025. If there are any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Just I'd like to just address the impact to transportation. Can you?
Yes, so we have.
Can we have a motion on some person?
Sorry. Comments, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for reallocation of funds as presented.
I will second, we move into discussion.
So we have been able to purchase buses with all-in funds, so we were able to use money there. That was $138,000 there. We also have been able to use some money that normally would have been taken locally for tutoring and such, transportation for that out of all-in funding. All of those meet those grant requirements. So the federal and state grants that we have received have been able to be used for those, which we have money to purchase a bus. However, as Dr. Fox spoke, we can't, if we can't move on July 1, we can't get a bus back. So, and we often have found that even recently after COVID, it's longer than 12 months in time span. At one point, we were out 18 months, according to our bus garage foreman, to even get a bus. So if we don't have the preapproval and blessing from the Board of Supervisors to order and guarantee that our money from one current fiscal year is going to carry to the next fiscal year for that, such as in a CIP plan, then we can't order a bus because we cannot get one here because of the special needs. And we just also found out today that ordering tires may become an issue for our buses.
I would also say too, with the grant process, you know, that we've been able to use to fund some of these items, that also has a delay, right? So it's not as if today we said, we want to buy a bus tomorrow, right? We have to amend those applications, which takes months to even get an answer back. Can we do that? And then, then we can say, all right, let's order. And so that process is really drawn out.
And because our, even on top of that, because our buses are special order now because of the size of our bus.
Thanks for that. I think it's important that we have those facts in our quiver so that when the question comes back, we can quickly answer it.
And Dr. Johnson's staff has also been compiling a list of operational and maintenance needs that normally would have been in a CIP plan since July for me so that we are able to answer that question of, well, so for example, the replacement chairlift at Page County Middle School was $48,000. And if we were not to replace that, then we would not be in ABA compliance and would have to install an elevator. Though I believe an elevator.
Those are pretty costly.
So there are certain things that we're maintaining in our aging facilities to keep in compliance, and if we were to go another route, it would be even more costly.
So is the 225, is that buses only or is that other stuff?
No, so it's, there's money in transportation too. So then they have not had as much cost for things like substitutes or that, where we talked about the incentive plans, those kind of things. So when we look at this, Ms. Miller got a lesson in this today. She was with me today. We look at, we pull an expenditure sheet. I mean, it's, we start with where are we at, what's encumbered, you know, and I'm looking at all the lines of this budget. And what can we unencumber that we are still going to have left in O and M that hasn't been paid against? And, you know, so it's a mad science of how we look at this and look line by line. So I do not believe we are undercutting transportation. If we could get a bus here, not now, but knowing in a plan that it would take less than 12 months, that would be ideal. It's not going to be.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Overfelt?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Dr. Fox?
Yes, this evening I just bring you, in order to accommodate a variety of activities and various schedules taking place in May, I'm recommending to you all that the board change the May meeting schedule by canceling the meetings that were scheduled on May 8th and May 22nd and having one meeting on Thursday, May 15th. No change to the time or the location of the meetings, just canceling the 8th and the 22nd and moving it to the 15th with your approval tonight. If you give that, we'll move forward and making sure that gets communicated out.
And what's the reasoning?
Just different accommodating, different schedules and the.
Is it our schedules or?
Yes, some of your schedules, the search, and getting those dates to align. The 15th worked better for your search process as well.
And then the 22nd is the date for the panel stuff, so.
So the only thing I would just point out is we've got the senior recognition issue at the governor's school. That's early in the morning, so it shouldn't interfere.
Yeah, we should be okay with that because that's only about 30, 40 minutes.
So from my perspective, I'm okay with that.
Motion.
So I make a motion that we move forward with cancellation of the scheduled board meetings on the 8th and the 22nd of May and move it to one board meeting on the 15th at our regularly scheduled time.
A second motion. Motion by Mr. Overfelt and a second by Ms. Sullivan Soot. Mr. Painter or Ms. Bryant, are you? Something from?
Yeah.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, Mr. Painter?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yeah. Thank you. Board member comments?
I have one piece of information that I want to share. I had lunch last week with Denise Meadows, who is a graduate of Page County High School, JMU. She worked in the financial aid at JMU for years and then she moved on to Diesel Institute of Technology in Nashville, and now she's working for the University of Southern New Hampshire. She lives in Shenandoah, but she does a lot from home. She's also on the town council of Shenandoah. Anyway, she sent me an email a while back telling me that she had been invited to join the Virginia Hunt State Policy Fellows Program. I had never heard of it before, but what caught my attention was some of the programs that they have that these people who belong to this go to. She attended a session in Richmond on April 6th and 7th on early child education. She'll be going to one in June in Rono on K through 12 education. And in the third meeting sometime in August, she'll be going to one with higher education and workforce development. So in my mind, I'm thinking, wow, what a great resource she could be for Page County. For example, if you needed, you had a work day and you wanted someone to come in and share, she would love to do that. She'll have connections all over the state of Virginia. So I told her I would bring this to you all tonight and then I'm going to send all of you her information. And then maybe by, I guess we have to have a motion to, you know, let her be a resource or I can let her know if you're interested that that's coming, but we meet May 15th if it needs to come to that. But the main thing is she's there, she's local, she's one of ours, and she's getting a lot of good information. So I just thought it would be helpful to share with all the schools in the county and see what comes. So I will send this to everyone and you can get it and look through it.
You think she might be willing to come and give us a short presentation?
Yes, and that was the other thing. I know it's, everything's kind of busy, busy, but she said she would come and talk with the board. So, you know, we can decide when that can happen. So, yeah, I'm excited. I was really impressed, so. Okay, I'll send you all the email. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So again, I'm not to poke anybody in the face, but Facebook, I personally have an issue with Facebook and it's, so I'm just going to bring it out. There's a lot of, there's some keyboard heroes out there in the county that like to send notes and things on Facebook and when you send stuff on Facebook, if you send it anonymously, that has no value. If you're not willing to put your name to an issue or something, then I'd say please don't send it because we can't act on non-factual information. And also we'll say that Facebook is not our official means of correspondence. You have an issue, you should be emailing it to the division or you can write a letter or you can actually come and present at our board meetings. So it's just something that I've been thinking about over the last few months. I think Facebook has gotten way out of control in our society. That's just my opinion. I'm not sure it's shared by others, but it is something I feel pretty strongly about. I also wanted just to say that I went to the PCTC event with the fifth graders. That was fantastic. It was really rewarding to see the little people on one side of the table and other little people on the other side of the table teaching them. And the level of responsibility that they undertook and the pride that they had teaching the fifth graders who were just absorbing it like sponges was really just quite remarkable. And so I hope we continue those kind of programs. I think it's really worthwhile. I think it gives the kids a great opportunity to experience a lot of different things in one setting. I did have to, I was disappointed, the girls at the cosmetology table said they weren't really ready to give me a haircut yet, but I understand that they will do that.
They will do that.
So they'll give you haircuts and I'm going to go back over. I'm about due for one, so I'm going to get one. And lastly, and I'll shut up, I wanted to say excellent presentation by Page Middle School today. The accreditation is just, that's wonderful news. I mean, I think we're credit, we're tight now across school division, aren't we? One lap, that's right. But, and a great movement in your advocacyism, that is tremendous. And I think that's a testament to your leadership and your programs has been very successful. So well done. I'll shut up.
I have one more thing. Last year, when the art show was at Page County, I brought my six-year-old grandson Everett. And so about two weeks ago, we were just talking and then he said, Mom and Jack, is there an art show sometime this year? I said, you remember that? I said, yeah, there is. And it was on Thursday night and I'm, oh, he's got to go to school. He's in the first grade now. Rocket Hand didn't have school on Friday. So he said, oh, so we'll go. He said, maybe we can eat dinner first. I said, we can do that. So, but I mean, I was impressed that he remembered, but I mean, we looked at every single one and the ones with the different faces and all that, they get into that. But I just want to say how impressive, and again, hats off to all the art instructors in this county because you're doing a super job. And I had one family, their son put something in and the dad had been trying to get him to do it and he finally did. He's been second grade and I was amazed what he did. So keep up the good work. If you ever decide to do private art lessons, let me know.
Just wanted to thank you guys for the grant that you all did try to initiate. I know it's a lot of work and it's a lot of time, but approved, not approved, we still appreciate the efforts that are made with all the grants that are worked for. And ladies, thank you all so much for coming tonight. And I want to thank you for being so open to this new program being under that roof. I know that you guys were excited and willing and I also really appreciated the honesty when you were like, how's it going? Well, you know, because that's true with anything, right? It's not going to be perfect immediately. We strive for that and I love that you're working the kinks out and I love that you're designing everything individually for each student to help them progress. And I know that can change from day to day as the needs can. So thank you. I know that requires a lot of patience, especially with all the other things you have going on in the building.
Yeah, so I'd say same about the Page Middle School presentation. It's great. Congratulations, Ms. Miller, you're going to take a new role and I appreciate you're a person of integrity. I appreciate that all through those years of improvement, really been good and though it's been a good, calm, based on, and you guys have done well in your school and the audit ad program, I hope it continues to get better as we go through things. A couple of shout-outs to Lisa Pullen, who was our volunteer of the month. Her husband's Eric and Eric was a graduate of 1985, Page County High School. I grew up with him in the river, different things he used to do, some things I cannot share. And then Tanner Weaver, his father Gilbert was 85, Page County High School as well. And he has twin aunts who graduated with me or some of my best buddies in school. So it's kind of neat to see these second, third generations going through here. I think I'm looking forward to next year. I hope we get through this superintendent search and get going and keep getting better and get that one school over the hump, remain where we're at with the others, and make this a great school division.
You've been sitting there so pocketly the whole meeting?
My, I think my favorite part of these school board meetings is seeing like all the events that the, like within the communities and within the schools. I think that those are just great for the students specifically, like the art show and the GT showcase and the English learner event. I think those are just so cool to see because I know, I know personally I have one of my friends who participated in the English learner event who is a, she has a hard time speaking English in school, but I know that she had a great time at that event and she enjoyed it and she loved seeing some of her art that was there and some of her little siblings and cousins. So it was just, it's great to see and it really put a smile on my face, so.
Ms. Allen, I know you're on the phone, I don't want to leave you out.
I'm okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, we hope that you feel better.
What's the magic words there, Ms. Allen?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Megan's got.
Oh, I didn't get to say anything yet.
Oh, sorry.
That's, no, it's okay. Apparently talked. I just want to thank everybody for everything they do, including the board. You know, a lot of people put in a lot of hours and it takes everybody. We're getting ready to have an event next week where we get to showcase Page County High School in the Valley Region art show and Valley Region Spring Forum. And really the whole theme is champions for impact and it takes everybody. It's down to, it doesn't matter what you do in the school division or even in the community, honestly, it takes all of us to be, to really make an impact. I just want to thank everybody. Now, Ms. Allen or Mr. Overfelt, whoever.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Allen and a second by Mr. Overfelt to adjourn.
Yes.
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 Yes.